Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the June 13th, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 23rd, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 23rd, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Going on to the updates, the first selectmen's updates. We had a nice ribbon cutting for Greenwich's newest business the other day, Italy, which is over at the old Boston Market site in Old Greenwich. Sammy Tembre, who's known to a lot of people here, has had lots of businesses and restaurants in the past. It's really good, and there's healthy options there, too. So it's not just all loaded up on calories. You can actually eat healthy there, too, and enjoy it. So, good luck to Sammy and his team over there. This Friday, there is another ribbon cutting next to Gerlick &amp; Herbs. It's called Hammer &amp; Nails. So we'll be down there on Friday. And this Saturday, we will be having a movie premiere here in Greenwich called Hard Miles at the Teen Center. And it's, the Bike Task Force is the one that's putting this on. And Matthew Modine will be there, who's a star of the show, who actually lived in Greenwich for 18 months and is the first cousin of our own Jenny Larkin. I spoke with Matthew the other day, and he has very fond memories of Greenwich and a really, really nice guy. He lives in the city. So we're looking forward to seeing Matthew and seeing this movie and hopefully drawing attention again to our efforts to get people out there, exercise them, but to do so safely. On the 19th, at 12 o'clock, there'll be a Juneteenth celebration. I think it's our third one. Unfortunately, I won't be here that day, but the proclamation will be read by my colleague here. Lauren, thank you. On the 23rd, I'm sorry, on the 26th, there is Linhardt Dentistry's 3rd anniversary. That'll be over at Popo at 5:30. We'll stop by and say hello to them. And just a couple of things, a couple of matters to bring up. We had the first meeting of the Havemar Building Task Force, which is going to look into an RFP for that building. It's a very, very good committee with people with the skill sets that actually will, I believe, within three to four months come back with a report to us about what we would like to see at the Havemar Building eventually. And it's exciting. Everybody there was very excited about it. So stay tuned for more information and more news on that in the months to come. We have, we're going to continue the hearings of the gas-powered blowers. But again, I'm getting lots of calls from people, and I'm trying to remind people, this year is going to be tough. You don't need to run out and yell at anybody. You don't need to do, you know, be nasty to anybody. I've encountered two landscapers on my street in the last two weeks that had no idea. I don't think they're from here. They were very nice. I went up to them, I smiled, and I just told them about the ordinance. And I think that's the way to handle it. You know, we have, we're getting reports of people coming out and screaming and yelling, and you're going to get yourself in trouble. So behave yourself. Don't act in a way that's going to bring embarrassment and shame to you and your family and to the town when it gets in the papers. So this is, you know, put it in perspective, people. Put it in perspective. Last item is, I want to be putting something out about the Freedom of Information requests. We're getting a lot of them, and unfortunately, we are big fans of that, but unfortunately, it's been politicized and it's been used, it's been weaponized. And we're getting harassed. We've been getting harassed by a lot of people. Many people frequent requesters. And I know many towns have started to list the names of these people that are making these requests and just what they're requesting and how much it's going to cost us in time and effort. So we're working on that now. We know other towns have done this. We're trying to be fair to people, but if people, we truly seek transparency, and I think all of us agree with that because it's a great governmental tool to make, that engages the citizenry to make sure that people are doing the right thing. But it has been abused. And so we seek to give them the same transparency that they seek of others. So just a heads up, that will be coming out there if you're, and what you're requesting. You'd be surprised with some of the words and the amounts of requests that we're getting and the words they're looking for. So stay tuned on that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everyone. I'm really excited. It was on the front page of the paper today. Central Middle School gets its planning today. So the Planning and Zoning approved our final site plan, and that means we can move forward with getting bids on our construction materials. So not only was the building approved, the grass, the new grass fields with sophisticated irrigation, the vehicular and bus access, as well as the parking improvement. So, super excited. I mentioned at the Planning and Zoning meeting, I think we were interviewing candidates like two and a half years ago. So just to, not that we did the heavy lifting, but the building committee and especially our regulatory group, which was Claire Kilgallen, Steph Cowie, and Dennis Yesky, yeoman's work to get us to this point. So, super exciting for the town, for the community. It's an exciting project. Everyone keeps talking about it's the most expensive project. So there's a lot of, you know, i's that need to be dotted and t's that need to be crossed, and we'll continue to do that as I am the Board of Selectmen liaison to this particular building committee. I don't usually make announcements, and there she is, Steph. I just thanked you. I don't usually make announcements, but we do have a flag raising tomorrow. So it is, if I'm not mistaken, the Army flag, and we're going to be raising it at 10:00 a.m. in the front of Town Hall. There was one other thing, just to piggyback on what you had said, Fred, about the ban and, you know, just everyone just, you know, maybe taking it down a notch, because this is a major transition. We have 64,000 residents. We have over 2,000 households, and the ban is for certain areas and not for others and certain people and not for others. So just maybe assume positive intent, and we'll just hopefully, as a community, you know, move forward and get through this, just assuming positive intent, because it is so new. It's unique for us, maybe not for other municipalities, and it's not like a black-and-white ordinance. So that's just my feedback.
Thank you. Thanks, Lauren. Good point. And remember, there's almost 64,000 people here. There's 67 square miles and about 23,000, 24,000 households. That's a lot. And I know in other jurisdictions, mayors, and first selectmen have called me to see how we're doing this, because in some cases, their police departments are not very happy because it's taken away from their ability to do other things. So, you know, let's, let's make sure that we're not, you know, picking up the phone first thing. If we, if you see the person, you know them, you may want to go out there and just have a chat with them in a nice way. Like I said, the two people I encountered didn't even know about the ordinance. So, anyway, thank you. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. So I will also piggyback on that. I will just say that this is, this is about, you know, this season is our first go at this. It's about public education. I know that our Conservation Commission has produced flyers, so, you know, rather than approach people personally, if, if one wants to, you know, get one of the, get these flyers and hand them out, because that will educate people about exactly what this ordinance is doing. All right. And with that, June is a very busy month. I am looking forward to tomorrow's and next week's Safety Town graduations. My 20-year-old son still remembers his experience, so I just want to say thank you to our Red Cross for putting that on. Fred has already mentioned Hard Miles on Saturday. Sunday, Happy Father's Day to all who celebrate. On Monday, the 17th, at 2:00 p.m., Greenwich Botanical Center will be sponsoring, and the Sustainability Committee is a cosponsor of a program called Fireflies and Pollinators. I'm looking forward to that. Tuesday, the 18th, is our high school graduation. Congratulations to all. Fred already mentioned on the 19th, that is our Juneteenth celebration at Town Hall. That carries on, though, to Saturday, the 22nd, at the Greenwich Historical Society, which will be putting on a free and public program related to Juneteenth. On the 20th, it's Summer Solstice, and not coincidentally, it's International Horseshoe Crab Day. I encourage anyone who has not seen this migration of horseshoe crabs to go to Todd's Point. This is the kind of nature that people get on a plane to see, and it's in our own backyard. And then finally, before our next meeting is on Sunday, the 23rd, is Experience the Sound from 1 to 4, also at Greenwich Point, also a really good day. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Janet. Lots going on down here. Okay, going on to old business. We have the request for the amendment to update Schedule 11 of the Street Sweeping Ordinance, and Deputy Chief Craig Gray is here from Parking Services, and this is a second read. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. Deputy Chief Gray, Parking Services Director. The only thing I have to report, as this is a second read, is that we received no response. So as it was written before, we've received no response from, within Parking Services.
Again, I haven't heard anything either. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. That's pretty clear. That's your quickest ever.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the change to
Update.
To the Schedule Roman numeral Xi, Street Sweeping PSP 2024-13.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Okay, next up is a request to create a Board of Selectmen ADA and Advocacy Committee of People with Disabilities, and Ben Brannion's back. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, all. The only update from the last, this is a second read, but from the first read, was there was some discussion on who selects the committee chair. I shared an email with the board over two prior committees. The Selectmen Citizens Police Advisory Committee, the Language Reads, the First Selectmen, and the Energy Management Advisory Committee, the Language Reads, the Board of Selectmen. The ADA Policy in front of you reads the Board of Selectmen. And I think last meeting, you had, you had questions about whether the committee should select their own. So you have three choices. Choice is yours. We have no strong recommendation, because they're currently, I think, just whatever meets the needs of the committee and/or the board.
Thank you, Ben. I have no preference at all. I don't know if my colleagues do.
Just, just maybe consistency.
Consistency, but it sounds like we, there is no consistency. So we have three options. I mean, I'm all about democratic process. I would, I would let the committee choose their chair, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think we've done that with the building committees. I think that's, I think in keeping with that, and maybe we could try and line up the other ones where I'm picking them and the board's picking on the other ones. Maybe we should line them up in the future, too, to be consistent. But, yeah, I would probably, myself, prefer to have the committee do that, because they can at least get together and come up with a way, you know, consensus on who they would like to chair these committees. So I'm okay with that.
So I can make that adjustment and as amended then. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So we, you need a vote on this today?
I believe Mr. Alexander wishes to speak from the public on this item.
Okay, but you need a vote?
Need a vote to make it formal.
Perfect, okay, thank you. And before the vote, Peter Alexander has the floor.
Yes, thank you, Peter Alexander, 76.
Yeah.
Peter Alexander, 76-year resident of the town, licensed landscape architect for 40 years, former chairman of the Greenwich Point Committee when we challenged the state and won, chairman of the Historic District Commission, and helped preserve portions of town that I'm very proud of. And accidentally, the timing, I was able to complete the first ADA-compliant ramp in the country. It just happened, went into effect June 1st, and Field Club is opening June 4th. I really think that we should recognize that then Congressman Wyker and President H.W. Bush made this happen, and I would like to make sure that they get recognition. Yesterday was H.W. Bush's WWII hero and amazing Greenwich resident as a child, graduated Greenwich Country Day to recognize his importance. Is this something I said?
Yes.
Yes.
Watch it, Peter.
I got thrown off a couple of commissions for daring to use a too-small a windmill puncher, and I'd love to be able to consider being on that commission. Thank you for getting this going.
Well, thank you. And you bring up something that's near and dear to me and many others. You mentioned President George H.W. Bush, who, you were right, he was the president when this went into effect, and we, he's also a war hero. At 18 years old, he grew up in Greenwich, and he went into the services and was shot down, and there's actually a video of him being pulled up in the South Pacific. And you could tell it's him, a very skinny, young George Bush. And one of our things to, slightly off-topic, since you brought it up, though, is we want to rededicate Veterans Plaza Park in front of Restoration Hardware and put a statue of President Bush there, because we don't have any on public, and he was a president. There's only been 45 of them, and one grew up here and one was a war hero. And I hope to have 100% support on that from the RTM and everybody else, because I think that is such a project that's long overdue. And as you mentioned, he did some pretty good things for the country and for the world, and certainly the ADA law back in 1991, I believe it was.
34 years.
1990.
34 years this summer. We'll celebrate.
So it was 1990?
1990.
Alan Gunsberg?
Thank you. 34 years ago, the ADA was signed by President George Bush, and at that time, not many places really have gone, especially in Connecticut, have gone forward and really taken the law on and done everything that you're responsible to do. It may be an unfunded mandate, but to me, the ADA is like the freedom rides. I got my, my civil rights. And in a lot of cases in this town, like with our meeting last week and a half ago, we allowed, we allowed people to say how much more important it is to drive than it is for people like me, who, I'm late here because I couldn't get a ride. I can't do what you guys do. It ought to be fair and access and, and
So, yeah, so I
It ought to be, ought to be something that we work on, on a regular basis, because without access, we're leaving people out of our community. So I appreciate everything that you've done, Fred. I think this would be a great step forward, and we'd love all the help we can get, Mr. Alexander, especially somebody with a background as deep and as storied as yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate you bringing this to us. I think this will be a good, a good change, and will survive, you know, current boards of selectmen and going forward. It's that important. And again, this is not a nice-to-have. This is something that is the law, and it's something that we want to make sure it's not just compliance, but as we like to say, there's inclusion involved. And again, maybe this area here, which will be ADA-compliant, having a statue of the president who signed the law would be pretty cool, I think. So, thank you so much for that. Lauren's still out. I don't want to, I guess we could just vote, because I don't know how long she's going to be.
If you're comfortable, if you're comfortable, because I don't think, I don't think we're going to vote
Yes, this is
Contrary to her
No.
Vote, but
Yeah. So
She's coming. Thank you, Steph. Sorry, when the Daniel Luther call, we've three times.
Absolutely. Oh, good. Well, while you're, while you're getting your seat, I'm just going to say thank you to this committee for all that they do. You don't just serve the disabled community. You, you serve all of Greenwich. So thank you so much.
And thank you, yes. It's, it's very important, and again, we're, we're playing catch-up with this, but we're good to get there and make sure that every, every square inch of public ground is ADA-compliant and inclusive. So the request is to create a new, a Board of Selectmen ADA, not a First Selectmen's ADA Advisory Committee, Advocacy Committee with people, of people with disabilities. So we're just switching it over from First Selectmen-centric to the Board of Selectmen. And so we'll entertain a motion for that.
Is it amended because we're having them select their chair?
Are you going to come back, amend it as, as, yes?
Yes, okay. So I motion that we approve the creation of a board of, or the transition of the First Selectmen's ADA and Advocacy Advisory Committee to the Board of Selectmen's ADA and Advisory Committee with the change that the board would select their own chair.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Steph. Appreciate all your work. Okay. Next up is a project update. I think it may be good news on Greenwich Avenue's Water Main Break. Is Justin with us? Yes.
Justin is online, so Justin, you can speak whenever you're ready.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can, Justin. Good morning.
All right. Good morning, everyone. So, quick update for the Greenwich Water Main Replacement Project. Our contractor, A.J. Penna, has subcontracted American Paving. The work is planned to take place the week of the 24th of June. We expect this to take less than one week, and we do apologize again, this is going to be more night work. We did request change to our permit hours with DPW that was denied. So the contractor will be sawcutting the trench, milling, and then paving. Those will be loud operations in the night hours. Were there any questions from the board?
Can you repeat when you, the date is, anticipated date of completion is?
The week of June 24th, and we expected to take less than one week, so I would anticipate it being completed by the 28th of June.
Okay, so I pushed it back, because I had heard that you may be a little bit early than the end of the month, but it's a couple days. All right, we'll take it. All right, thank you, Justin. Any questions?
No, and there's no vote required for this. It's just an update. Okay.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Thanks, Justin. Have a great day.
Thank you. You, too.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have a list of public hearings. We kept it open, so we're going to go, we have to take these handlies, unfortunately, one at a time. The first one is from, I don't know if Jeff is here, Jeff Greco. I have spoken with Jeff a few times. I explained, what we explained at the last meeting, which is that the bar is fairly high for us to grant a variance here, and the town attorney's here if anybody wants to confirm that. Also, it opens up a lot of other issues, where if we granted one, right, for some reason and others were not, it opens us up to, again, possible, whatever, litigation or whatever down the road, and we really, you would open up the floodgates. We really wouldn't even have the time to deal with it. So what I've suggested to lots of people I've spoke to is, as you go through this summer in the landscaping business, do your best to comply with us and, and keep records and data and show what you've done. And at the end of the summer, if you still feel that you need a variance, then I would get together as a class and go back to the RTM as a class and ask for that, because, but you have to have some data there, because I don't think it would be received favorably if there's, if there's not data there. But for us to grant a variance on this, really, we haven't seen anything that rises to the level wherein it comes to public health and safety and the welfare of the public. So I don't know if any of my colleagues have anything to add to that.
I think this has just been super challenging for everyone. Again, I was saying before, let's assume positive intent. I know I was quoted in somebody's paper, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And then just thinking through it, it's, it's definitely different for the municipality because of the number of employees, because of the municipal budgeting. It's not the same way to, you know, you know, gain the funds to make the transition, but I have such empathy for the landscapers, because I understand the economic hardship that it is for the landscapers as well. But as Fred said, the way that we had to look at this is, does it ride to the level of protecting public safety or not protecting, to impacting public safety? But I, I feel very strongly that this is the transition period, and I am not saying no to the variance. My, I have not discussed this with my colleagues, but I am abstaining, because I don't want to say no to the, to the request, but I think my colleagues will be saying something different.
So, thank you. So I'm, I'm going to echo your remarks that, to be fair, I mean, I think that this ordinance is fair, and the way, the way to be fair to all interested parties is to apply it fairly. I'm going to echo your remarks that what we're being asked to do is consider whether there are overriding public health, safety, or welfare concerns. So that's the bar. That's the first bar that we have to meet. I mean, we're, it's very specific, and I'm going to say the same thing for every, every one of these requests. Assuming that one can establish that there are, that then the question is whether those concerns can only be addressed with gas-powered leaf blowers, can they not be addressed with electric or some, some other means? And then, you know, the variance isn't going to be a blanket variance. It would have to be for those properties and for that, those actions that are specific to that variance. We can't just give a blanket variance. So, to me, those are the three questions that we have to address for each one of these requests.
Thank you, yeah. So, and again, I haven't heard, when I spoke with Jeff, he was okay with this a couple weeks ago. So we can make a motion to close this particular hearing, because we're going to have to do this for all six of them. So is there a motion to close this, and we have to give a written opinion in 10 days for each one of these?
Business days.
10 business days, okay. So is there a motion to close this public hearing for Jeff Greco Landscaping, LLC?
So I'm, I will make it for Lauren, since she's abstaining. And I will, I will say at this time, so I'm going to make the motion to close this hearing, and for this particular request, we have not heard any compelling evidence that any of my questions have been answered. So Janet Stone-McWiggin, I motion that we close the hearing on the noise, noise ordinance variance request from Jeff Greco Landscaping, LLC.
I'll
You have to second.
Second it. And all those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Do you have to say abstain?
Lauren Raven abstains.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Yes, I close.
I just want to clarify something. All you're doing is voting on closing a public hearing. You're not doing a formal vote on the actual substantive request.
Yeah, so we're going 10 business days.
I, I, just the fact that, that Lauren has indicated when it comes time to actually vote in a couple of weeks, that she's going to abstain, has no bearing on, on closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Just going forward. I just wanted to make that clear.
You guys were so, you were so thrown off, too.
I, I know this all gets confusing, but
I wanted to respect Lauren, Lauren's indication, and you're right, we have, we have this pattern about who firsts and who seconds and who, so. Okay, so I, I vote yes to close it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So it's three to nothing. Okay, next up is the public hearing on the noise ordinance variance request from Briggs Landscaping Design, so...
Yes, and Liz Briggs would like to speak.
Yes.
Good morning. How are you? Fred Camillo, Lauren, and Janet. My name is Kathryn Briggs, Briggs Landscape Design LLC. For my particular variance, I was hoping this would be a blanket for all landscapers. I feel that the health issue, I'm going to touch on it, is that there's an atmosphere of hostility going on outside, the amount of harassment that landscapers are receiving. People are trespassing on people's properties. The volume of calls of the police department, there's a lot of unrest, and that needs to be settled, and like, this is a transition year. Unless I got 20 blowers going, this is not, this shouldn't be at all, this harassment and attitude is atrocious. I left Greenwich. I worked at other houses in different towns for two weeks. I only came here for the only houses I needed to do, did not want to put up with it. So as far as health and safety, I'm going back to the safety of the batteries. There's no law that the firemen have to report the batteries being on fire, except for in New York City. I think that data is very limiting on these decisions. I think the heat and humidity is also a big factor on the health and safety of this. I also think the town has to get appropriate funds, but what about us getting appropriate funds and changing over our garages and changing over everything else? So for that, I know this is a transition year, but I would just be like more firm that landscapers do not need to be harassed and that we do need the transition, and that publicly it has to come out, because that's enough is enough. And I also feel like there's still a safety issue with the batteries itself and the logistics. And Roberto is going to tell you, because he has on his phone the facts from one landscaper who has electronic, electric materials and the hardships and what's going on with them about how they're not able to find parts. Parts have been on order for almost a year, and the cost of this, just in general. And he'll go in on that one when he comes up here, for sure. So there's a lot of backhand cost on this, and if the town gets a full-on year, we should have a full-on year, and the harassment should stop.
Thank you, absolutely. And I'll put out another statement again today on this, because there's no need for that at all, and we're better than that. And so people are working hard, and like I said, if you don't want to confront somebody, if you're going to do it, do it with a smile, and just tell them what the ordinance is, like I did with the two people on my street, and they were very nice about it. They didn't know, and they were fine. But if you approach somebody and you're snarling and you're trespassing on private property and yelling, then you're setting yourself up for confrontation. So we'll get something out there again on this.
And the police department have much better things to do in this town than landscapers. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful day.
You, too, Kathryn.
So, wait, don't go anywhere, because I will...
Please.
No, I just wanted to address, if that's okay, because the overriding safety concern isn't about the safety of the electric blowers. It's what are you doing that is the overriding public safety concern? What are you doing with those blowers?
Janet, my, what we're doing is we're cleaning up. My company tends to use it appropriately. I understand that people abuse it, and we tend to use it to clean up job sites. We are pruning a whole bunch of stuff, all big acreage of property, so raking and stuff like that, we do do that, but then you just need a couple minutes of blowing to just clean up. We're not blowing the whole lawn at this time of the year, but we do use it as a tool in the toolbox for appropriate measures. And there's a lot of, right now, there's a lot of tree debris. Birch's have a lot of tree debris is down. A lot of gutters are clogged, so cleaning out some gutters, cleaning out drains so they don't flood is what we're using it for. You can't always reach down and get everything. You can't have the 10-foot tool and everything. So the blower becomes a little bit of a handy thing. You can't be going in a huge drain and like, the blower just helps it push it along so you don't endanger the worker in that drain situation, or, you know, on a small gutter situation.
Right, but it...
We use the blowers, but yes, but using a corded blower up there is a little hard. And so just having the handy-dandy gas, just go whoop, and then that's it. You're done. It's like five minutes and you're done. It's not all day.
Right, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but a gutter on a private property doesn't pose a public health threat? That's where I'm...
Okay, well, then, there's the drains. If you don't clean up those drains, and that water becomes onto the streets and goes into the public sewers and becomes a public runoff. That's kind of one of the things. There's, you know, if I don't clean up my drains on my property, it goes down the hill and into the street, and that becomes a public safety over on that aspect of it. And when people are walking and slipping, right now, you don't have a lot of slip hazards, but coming right at the cusp of September, when the time starts to get shorter in the days, and there's a lot of monk and gunk, it becomes slippery, just a little bit of moisture on it. Irrigation head breaks, and that's on the public sidewalks and streets.
So this is where I'm going. This is where I'm trying to understand. So if you can argue that that is a public safety or health concern, then the next level of question is, why do you have to use a gas-powered leaf blower rather than electric or a different tool? And then we would have to word the variance such that this activity would be granted a variance, but...
Not all activities.
Not all activities.
I understand that, but it's, during the summertime, there is a lot of debris, and then also we find that horticulturally, people will not prune until like October 1st, which is not beneficial to the plant material, and because they don't want to have all the debris. And you want to be pruning now, so it hardens off for the winter, so you don't kill the plant. That's not a public safety thing.
Again, right. That's where I'm...
Okay, so basically, the public safety thing is, is like, you don't want the debris that collects during the summer over time. Now, some places, there's hardly any, and other places, because of the plant material, there's a lot more. You just don't want all this plant debris to build up and then backflow into sewers, clog sewers, get into the public, on the streets, on the walkways, and then compounds that issue. For slip hazards, and you can't clean it up, it's better to clean it up a little bit all the time, all year round. So that's a specific thing, so, of that. And the compound issues, like if I have a hedge on the edge of a property and I prune it, and then all that debris, even though I rake it, there's still some debris, again, that's a trip hazard or a slip hazard.
So you understand where I'm going. This is, a request for a variance would have to word that very specifically, that these are the activities that pose public safety and health concerns, first. Secondly, this is why we can only use gas-powered leaf blowers and not electric, not some kind of other tool. And then we would have to word the variance so that it's just those activities that are granted, so...
So it's almost like the variance that we put, our request is not written correctly enough, and that we would have to rewrite it.
I'm going to require, you know, refer to our town attorney to say, am I asking the right questions? Is this...
I think you're asking the right questions. The board has the discretion to do what it believes is correct, regardless of what the specific ask was.
Okay, but I need to be educated about, I wouldn't, on my own, be able to say, these are the activities that a private landscaper... I mean, it was very clear in our, in the variance for the town departments, what the activities were, what we were giving a variance for, what the properties were for. In this case, this, you know, these requests haven't been worded that way.
And I understand, and that...
And I wouldn't be the, you know, I wouldn't say that I was the expert that knew all of those possible activities.
So then that has to enter into your decision as to what to do.
I mean, right, that's what I would say. Right now, the way it's worded, no, it doesn't explain that.
And that's your prerogative to decide.
Okay, and we have 10 business days, so, thank you.
I mean, you're more than welcome to come to any of our properties, and we could show you different activities, so, to educate you on a separate matter. But, I mean, I understand that the way we written our variances may not succeed in a positive response, but we just, you know, thank you for explaining to us, and, you know, I never wrote a variance till this time, so...
I am very sympathetic. I'm just going to say to my, because this is a public meeting, and this is when I can discuss with my colleagues, I would say, I would vote to close this and deny, but if you wanted to come back with a variance request that's worded differently, that's more specific to the line of questions I just asked, I would be open.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely would vote to close this, and then, again, we'll have 10 business days to issue a written opinion. But I'll go back to what I said at the beginning of this. For us to start granting individual ones, and it will never end, and we won't be able to get to everybody, and we will probably open ourselves up to litigation, my suggestion has been always to go through the summer, work really hard, see what you can do, try to comply. You may be fine, but if you find at the end of the summer, you know, you feel you need another year or so, then as a class, I would go back to the RTM and ask for that, because this is where, it came from the RTM, this ordinance. Because what we're going to do is make a convoluted situation 100 times worse. And I get it, because I've done this work, right? I don't need to go and follow, I know, I've done landscaping. I had a business a long time ago. I've had, like, I'm glad of the biggest nurseries here in town. So I'm very aware of what you're going through, and what you say about, my biggest concern for you guys is, you know, when you're storing these things, right, you have to make sure, like, the town has to do that now. We can't store these things in wooden structures. So that's a concern. But certainly, we've been told again, what are charges here, and it's very specific. So again, I'll vote to close this, we'll issue a written opinion, and again, that's just my personal opinion, is to go through the summer and come back to the RTM in the fall.
I'm also thinking about Janet's line of questioning, because we have four meetings between now and the fall, so I don't know how many more people will come to us, but yeah, if you, if it was denied and you wanted to come back with the specifics, I'm not opposed to that either.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I just think the atmosphere in the town itself has to be...
Oh, for sure. It's not right. It's despicable, really.
It's not right right now at all. So thank you for your time. And again, if you have any questions of landscaping, or want to come see one of our properties, or ask a specific skill, I'm happy to arrange that for you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katherine. Appreciate that. Thank you. So is there a motion to close this public hearing?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo, say yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you. Next up is a public hearing on the noise ordinance variance request from Eric Anderson Landscape Contractors LLC. Is Eric here? He's not here. If you, if, we could vote to close it, because I haven't heard from Eric, but if you mentioned, you could, if he wants to send us something, if there's something new that he, before we, because we have 10 business days to issue a written opinion.
No, we have to...
Reach out to him.
Thank you.
Once you close the public hearing, no more evidence of any kind can be presented.
Okay, then he can just come back and apply again if he, if there's something else. Thank you, Barbara. I appreciate it. Okay, so we'll take a...
So are we voting to...
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we close the public hearing on noise ordinance variance request from E. Anderson Landscape Contractors LLC.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo, say yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you. Next up is the public hearing on the noise ordinance variance request from Old Glory Landscaping and Property Management, Maintenance, I'm sorry, LLC. Okay, same thing, if they want to reapply for it, then just, okay, thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we close the here, the public hearing on noise ordinance variance, on the noise ordinance variance request from Old Glory Landscaping and Property Maintenance LLC.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo, say yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you. Next up is the public hearing on noise ordinance variance request from Roberto Fernandez Landscaping. Roberto's been patiently waiting there. Good morning, Roberto.
Morning, Fred. Good morning, everybody. I'm Roberto Fernandez Landscaping, contractor here in Greenwich, and also I live in Greenwich. I think people still don't know a lot of the residents, the rules, what's happening. And I see a little bit of a failure in the town about communicating that with billboards, with more messages. A lot of people don't read the paper, so... I remember, Fred, the first meeting that we had with the, here, where Parks and Recs presented the request for variance, same as the landscapers. And then, you know, you called me and said, you know, to apply for the variance, and that, you know, would do the best to give it to us, so...
Well, I said we would listen to it, but, you know, we're trying, we're trying not to hurt anybody, but again, you've heard, you've heard me over and over again explain this, so I don't want to keep saying the same thing.
I get it. Now, we're here, and, you know, the Parks and Recs are getting the variance, and then I can see that we're not, and you want more information about why we need the variance. As you know, Fred, when all this happened, you never sit down with us, with the professionals, you know?
Who did?
You.
I did?
With me, with me, sitting down with landscapers, you know...
Roberto, Roberto, were you at the C.C.'s, C.C. Brothers at that meeting?
Yes, yes.
So I was there, so why would you say something like that?
You were...
I was at a meeting with landscapers. I was at, and I've met with several landscapers, but I was actually at a meeting. Weren't you at that meeting?
I was at a meeting with Quiet Yards.
No, were you at the meeting with, you just said I never sat down with the landscapers. I've sat down with multiple landscapers, and I thought, I think you were at one of those meetings.
I only was there with Mike C.C., the brothers, and the Quiet Yards. No, you, you weren't there.
Well, you, all right. Well, the one I was at, there was several landscapers at the, and I could have swore you were there, but...
No, no, I wasn't there. I was in the first meeting.
But anyway, so that's false. I've met with several landscapers.
Okay, all right, I apologize for that.
And again, I know the business, so you're not, I don't need to come and...
No, no, you know the business. So what I'm trying to say is, like, you know, listen more to what, you know, we can come up with ideas on how to approach this, you know?
You do know the other towns have been doing this for a while, right?
I know, and they're having, they're having issues. They're having hard times.
Not all, not all. We also have had a lot of landscapers that have reached out to people, saying that they're having no problem with it. So I don't, you got to be very careful about saying you speak for every landscaper.
I'm not saying, but I'm speaking for myself.
Well, I think it's coming across that way, and I got to tell you, there's, you know, some people from the Quiet Yards are telling me they're posting. I haven't seen it, because I don't see everything on social media, but they're saying they're posting things from landscapers who have saying that they're having success doing this.
It's been hard for us, you know, like, I know that, you know, it's going to be a big cost for the town, for Parks and Recs, but the same thing, it's going to be hard for us to come to invest, in this investment. So that's why we're asking for a little more time on this.
I know, and listen, I get it. When I was in the waste disposal business in 1989, we got thrown with recycling, right? We had to retool everything. Some guys ended up selling their business because they were afraid of it. We worked more for less, but we saved our businesses, we started recycling companies, we started Greenwich Recycling. It was a lot of work, and it was a lot of education, but we got it done.
Okay, so we'll...
So I mean, but so, my point is, industries don't stay stagnant. They do change. This is coming, and you knew that, and you know that.
I know it's coming.
So my point to you is, you know, do your best this summer to comply, build up a case. If you really think at the end of the summer that, as a group, that you need more time, then you could go to the RTM and say, look, this is what we've done. For four months, we've invested this, we've done this, here are pictures, you hear some testimonies from our customers, and say, we're still not, if that's the case, I don't know if that's going to be the case, then you'd have, I think, more of a chance. Because if you just go there and say, we want to, we can't do it, we can't do it, it's going to be, it's not going to be favorably...
Here's my facts. How am I going to charge this battery when you know that I don't have power in my yard? Okay? How am I going to charge it?
I, we had, we had the same thing, we had the same problem with diesel trucks. I mean, we, we all had...
So now I have to, you know, go and get another lease, and then I have to break my lease, and then hopefully the new landlord will allow me to have lithium batteries being charged in the yard.
But that's a legitimate, see, that's a legit, but that's what I've been, that's a legit, but that's something, again, that doesn't, the ordinance has been passed by the RTM, so I don't want to relitigate it.
No, no.
You have to abide by that. There's no choice on this.
Yeah.
But at the end of the summer, if you say, you know what, I can't find, my landlord will not allow me to do this, and I'm still searching, to me, that's a pretty compelling thing to come to the RTM with and say, look, we have a list of people here, we don't know if we'll have it in time for March, when we start our spring cleanups. We're, we don't know if we'll have it in time for March, when we start our spring cleanups. That's a compelling, and I think that's a very legitimate, if that's the case, it may not be the case. But that, but as far as right now, they passed this ordinance. So it's, it's in effect, but you do get a waiver this, this year, no fines.
Why landscapers are getting tickets, not with penalties, but tickets of, of warnings, okay? But I thought this was a year transition, so we can slowly move into it.
Yeah, and you're not getting fined, so there are warnings. So they're, what those tickets are, those warning tickets are putting out notice that you better get going on this now, because come next, 2025, they're going to fine you, there's going to be real.
We have till next Memorial, Memorial Day.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, you're not going to get fined now.
All right.
Now that, again, that was given from the RTM, I know it's confusing.
I know, but what we're here.
I'm not allowed to say you got a variance, because technically you didn't, but in reality you did, because you're not getting fined by it. But that's, it wasn't our call, that's, we, that was given to us by the RTM.
We shouldn't be stopped to, because landscapers are getting, are getting told to stop using the blowers.
Well, you, well, there is, technically, again, it's a very confusing thing that they passed. You have to abide by it, you'll get a warning ticket. Are you going to get fined until next year and, no, you're not. So in reality, you do have the variance, but you're, you're really, we're not allowed to say it, because what the RTM passed. It is super confusing, I get it. My point to you is, just try your best to comply with it. And again, most of the places I see around town where the, the houses are condensed, they're blow, you know, the two guys I saw, they were blowing off, one had three, one had two blowers, they were blowing off a driveway, there was dirt on it. And they didn't know, but that, that is, that's what's setting people off, they don't need to.
I get it, and I've been educating all my employees.
I know you're not doing it.
No, we're minimizing, right now, we're minimizing to, and we've been doing for the last six years, one blower per property, okay? And we're only doing the hardscape, the harder areas, the pool decks, back patios, tennis courts. We're not even blowing the driveways, I'm not wasting time on that.
Understood, but I'm going to repeat that for the variance, you have to explain what the activity is you're doing that addresses an overriding public health, safety or general welfare concern. So, so blowing off a private pool deck is not, is not.
But it's a request of a client that is paying, is paying for service.
That is not, but that is, right, but that is a private transaction, that's not a public.
So what about the gutters, that if we don't clean the gutters and something, we need to use.
That's the example.
And then the sample is that.
But private gutters are not, because again, that is not a public.
Yeah, but basements get flooded, because they're not cleaning the gutters. So now we have an issue with basements.
And, and what did we do before? Before leaf, leaf blowers, I mean, we cleaned.
Well, I wasn't born before leaf blower, but I can tell you that. I don't know what happened, you know? Maybe the word gutter.
Can I, can I repeat that for myself?
The gutter was a business that started later, but, but I, I want to read something, I don't want to take too much of the time. But this is from a, a local landscape company that is all green, okay? And he said, have experienced a significant amount of warranty repairs for the relative low use the equipment has endured. The warranty works includes multiple full machine replacements due to the non-serviceable components and, and available of parts. Still have Greenwich Green Works, was one of the brands, parts on back order from June 2023 from Argentos and Sons, who's a company in, did in White Plains. Has also cited battery replacement costing over $12,000 for these large mowers. In parts alone for the units we currently own, one, one which is on the shop as we speak, unfortunately, from my research, there are a few options when looking at commercial batteries, mowers. Pricing for these electric riders begin around $28,000, while other reputable brands reach up to $50,000. So it's, there is an issue out there with parts, there's an issue there with, you know, some of these electric blowers that they have in. So we invest in these electric blowers, a gas blower gets fixed very fast and easy. And now we have to waste, because we have a problem with parts on this lower. So you, you know, what are you going to do, keep buying more blowers, you know, over and over? Where you know, Fred, that by using multiple gas blowers, we can Frankenstein one from another and it's very easy. So again, I, I will make a, a new variance application and, and setting up the facts of why I need to use sometimes these blowers in the properties, you know? And again, you, you remember that there's a lot of high-end properties where they, they request high-end service.
But again, that's not a public concern, that is a private concern.
Yeah, but do you know that there's.
So if you come, if you come, just a minute, if you come back before us, the first line of, the first line that you have to explain is what you're doing to address public, overriding public health, safety and general welfare concerns.
I'm minimizing the use of blowers, I'm minimizing the quantities of blowers.
No, 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 that's not, that doesn't do that.
Why not?
You have to explain, you know, so, so your, your, your colleague already explained, started to explain, although we need, we need more elaboration, it has to, it has to somehow impact the public, not a private landowner.
Okay, so Parks and Recs are not impacting the public in public parks and sport facilities?
Of course they are.
And they're, but they're still using gas blowers this year.
That's the, but that's the point, they, they explained what, what they were doing that was an overriding public concern and that's why we gave them the variance. You haven't done that.
Okay.
And they didn't get what they wanted.
Would an example too, back to your point about the longevity of the, the battery powered leaf blowers, where do they get disposed when they don't work anymore?
Where are they going to go, you know? Are they going to get buried in the backyard of some, some house?
I'm just asking the question.
I, I don't know, because I, I don't have, I don't have the equipment. But eventually it's going to have to go to the town. Does it, does it take the town batteries?
But that's a secondary question, you first have to explain why you're using leaf blowers to address public health, safety and, and welfare concerns.
But where are these batteries getting disposed?
That, that's, that's a secondary.
I'm asking a question.
But that's not relevant.
Does Holly Hill accept this?
That's not relevant to our line of questions right now.
I don't know, I don't work for the town for the.
But I'm, I'm using that as a, as a point of.
Yeah, got it.
To, to add to your, your, your case.
What about the, the insurance that we, we had to request, they're requesting our insurance company, the legit companies that they have insurance, okay? That they're asking, they're telling us that we have to have a separate policy for the batteries, for the lithium batteries. And storage, if we are in a facility with a, with storage, they have to be contained in a fireproof container or building for 45 minutes.
But that, that answers my second question, not the primary question.
Okay, so there's more cost to us.
But you have to, you first have to answer the primary question. What are you doing to address overriding public health, safety and, and welfare concerns? These, all of these other considerations are secondary.
Got it, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, you have the floor, just come up here and announce.
My name is David Wald. Is the microphone on there? Still, my name is David Wald. Just a question that came up in, in this connection, Public Works or Parks and Rec, have they been ticketed ever?
They got a variance.
No, but prior to the variance, were they ever ticketed?
Yeah, they only start.
The public during this year are getting ticketed, they're not getting fined, but they're getting tickets.
Warrants, warnings.
Warnings. Do, does Public Work get during that year, warnings?
No, because they got a variance.
Ah, okay, no, just curious.
And the ordinance came into effect May 24th, so this year only started like less than a month ago.
And Public Works got their acceptance or?
They came before us before, it was, it was days, it was days before, but they came to us before.
Applying.
Yes.
But when did you grant, when did you grant it? When did you grant the variance?
I'm going to, I'm going to look to Barbara.
I can get the specific dates for you on that later, but it was granted before the regulations came into place. Next year, everyone is under the same fine structure and regulation, next year.
So then they can be ticketed as a fine.
Next year, yes, and there will be no more warnings next year.
Okay, so I motion that we. I'm sorry. Unless this board decides to grant another variance to the town. I mean, it, just to be clear, nothing is set in stone, it's, it's up to this board's discretion.
Thank you.
Wait for Fred, I guess we can keep moving. Lauren Raven, I motion that we close the public hearing on the noise ordinance variance request from Roberto Fernandez Landscaping.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
So then the next item is a public hearing on the noise ordinance variance from Michael Sinisi and Son Landscaping, Inc. And I'm not sure anybody's here for that. Right. All right, do we want to move on? Yes, so Lauren Raven, I motion that we close the public hearing on the noise ordinance variance from Michael Sinisi and Son Landscaping, Inc.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, oh, sorry.
Just to clarify for the record, I assume that your reasoning on this last one in terms of your decision will be the same as for the others?
Yes, absolutely. None of them, that have, none of the requests that have come before us have answered positively my, my three lines of questions.
Okay, so it's fair to say that your decision on each of these will be the same?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to new business, a request to raise the French flag on August 19th. Wynne McDaniel from the Daughters of the American Revolution Horse Neck Chapter and Renee Ketchum, Alliance Frances Greenwich.
Bonjour. Hello, everyone, I'm Wynne and this is Renee. And I first want to thank you all who were able to come to our ceremony on the display on June 4th. I thought we had a very nice turnout and hopefully people are getting educated on the importance of Lafayette to Greenwich. So we are here today to ask for your approval to raise the French flag on August 19th. We're going to have a ceremony at the Greenwich Historical Society and we've just passed out a flyer. Wendy is here with me as well from the Horse Neck DAR. That ceremony will be at 10 a.m., but we think it'd be appropriate at 9 a.m. to have the French flag raised, have a proclamation from Fred, and that will start off the day of activities. As we've mentioned before, Lafayette came to Greenwich on August 20th, 1824, so this is the 200th anniversary. He came back to the U.S. and traveled 6,000 miles at the request of President James Madison. And we're very proud to be able to celebrate this. So please let us know if you have any questions. Renee, anything to add?
No, I just think that it would be wonderful to introduce the community too, and I will tell you his name in full. Marie-Joseph Paul Yves Roche Gilbert du Moutier Marquis de la Vaillotte, who.
I knew that.
No, but to, to really include the community in this, in this wonderful celebration. Greenwich was his first stop in Connecticut. We have an incredible day of festivities at the historical society. We have a luncheon that I'm working on at Les Scalles that will be open to the community. I'm even thinking of a fabulous French car that may bring you, Fred, with Virginie de la Vaillotte to lunch at Les Scalles. We've created something really fabulous to honor a very important man in history for, for both France and the American, United States.
And at our event at 10 a.m., we're going to have Chuck Schwam from the American Friends of Lafayette. We're also going to have a Lafayette, pseudo Lafayette reenactor who will be there. And as Renee mentioned, Virginie de Lafayette is actually an ancestor of Lafayette, who will be here with her two daughters from France. And she'll be at this, hopefully at both ceremonies. So thank you so much. If we, do we need to come back for a second read on this approval? Or please let us know what your advice is.
Normally, I mean, I think we're all for this 100%. Normally, we try to, to just stay consistent unless it's time sensitive. So if that's okay, if that's okay, but you, you're going to get a 3-0 vote on this. But we, we want to stay consistent, because the minute we don't do it, someone's going to say, will you let them?
No, I understand.
We have it on the calendar to.
Believe me, there, there's people, probably this room, that will, will send an email later saying, why did you do this? So yeah, we try to stay consistent, but I, I really appreciate it and this is exciting.
Great, great.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much. All righty. Next up is Frankie, Frank's on the, Frank Cortez is with us via Zoom. This is for the request for the temporary road closure of St. Rocks Avenue for the St. Rocks Feast. We do this every year. Good morning, Frank.
One thirty, one board.
How are you?
I'm good, hopefully mine is the shortest for you guys today.
But you, you're coming through loud and clear. Yeah, all right, so we'll, is this time sensitive, Frank? Or can we just vote on this in two weeks?
You can vote on it in two weeks, it's fine, we, we have our two on the seven.
Okay, yeah, so I'll, I'll just briefly, if anybody here is not aware, we do this every year, it works really well. It's a, a feast that we've had for over 100 years here in Greenwich. It's, God bless you, it's known for its pizza feets, but certainly it's rides and other things that go on there. It's, it's really the pride of Chickahominy and that community there. So I'm looking forward to working at it again, Frank, and we'll definitely get this done for you in two weeks.
Sounds great, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you, Frank.
I'm good, bud.
You too, pal.
Yeah.
Okay, the last, we have up is, the last item under new business is an appeal of an ADA grievance decision. Mr. Wald would like to speak again.
You turned it off.
Green, green.
Hello, yeah. It's David Wald and just for the record, it is the first time I speak about this. And I would just like to read a statement that I prepared. To the Board of Selectmen, I stand here in front of you due to the town's appeal process after filing a grievance compliant complaint form back on March 6th, 2024. That led to a recommendation to file an ADA grievance report on April 27th, 2024. That required that if I wanted to appeal their findings and conclusion, I need to do same within a timeframe. Later, I was again told that this meeting that would then take place with the Board of Selectmen members to discuss what can be done would be a public meeting recorded and available on Zoom, et cetera, as it is today. It all started as a result of statements and actions carried out by the Board of Selectmen members to and about me and result of same going back far, but my complaint is based on the Board of Selectmen's meeting starting on February 8th, 2024. And I can add that since then, leading up to so many more after that, last, that's, last one was as late as this week. I find it ironic and maybe a given sign that I appear in front of you just as an application to raise the flag in connection with the 200th anniversary of the great friend of America, General Lafayette and his fight for all American. A matter and a celebration that I fully support and be carried out under the flag policy rules adopted in 2024. And then further the fact that the letter from the Department of Human Services, which concluded their investigation was dated on May 17th, the Norwegian National Day and Constitution Day, a constitution that is drafted from the French and the American constitution. France, Norway and the United States of America share many things among them, as I said. They are very similar constitutions and over 80 years has had a military alliance, starting going back to World War II. That is based on not all creatures, all are created equal and should be given the same rights by law and policies, et cetera. And as a result, majority of us as individuals. And as a result, majority of us as individuals, municipalities, governments, et cetera, are willing to protect and fight for such principles, not against it. We also share a common belief that we have the right to speak our mind without repercussion. And further the right to inform from our elected representative and the further the right to get information from our elected representatives and municipalities within reasonable time here in the United States that is covered under the Freedom of Information Act. Finding quoted in the letter on May 17, 2024, which are again based on my previous documentation and written notes based on communication with the Board of Selectmen members and the First Selectment's assistant. And and none of these documents that has been presented has been questioned. But I have not seen what was presented by the Board of Selectmen to the same investigating body. Checking only one item given by the finding and conclusion part of the letter, I received confirmation from the First Selectment's office that it was incorrect conclusion. So I have filed a Freedom of Information Act to obtain all obtained documents that led to the Department of Human Services' conclusion. Yesterday, I received the information that that could take up to 30 days to provide these documents. So why am I standing here today? Because of the policy? The policy says that a complaint has to be a complaint or an appeal has to be filed within 15 days of receipt of May 17 letter. So I have hereby appealed, but asked the Board of Selectmen to consider to wait until Town Hall has provided me with the documentation and itself that supports their own statements given before they deliberate on my appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any?
If I could just add a comment. At the beginning of this meeting, second select person, Lauren mentioned that there will be a flag raising tomorrow. Forgot, but I would like to just regenerate that it is the U.S. Flag Day tomorrow. There is no.
Yes, and the U.S. The U.S. Flag flies every single day here. Thank you. Okay, any questions?
I just would like a statement from Town Hall that it is the U.S. Flag Day and the citizens of Greenwich.
Yeah, we say, we do that all the time, but the U.S. Flag, again, I'm not going to get into a debate with you again on this, sir. So you have heard your statement. Do you have any comments on this? And then we could certainly look to the town attorney for this. We have 10 business days to respond to this or? Abby? Because I I because it was two, basically, there was two grievances here that I'm aware of, right? That there was an anti Norway bias by this board and that we were discriminating against this gentleman because of dyslexia, which I never knew. Because he emails us a lot all the time and he's always on social media. How would I know that? And even if I, we knew that he was dyslexic, why would anybody hold that against him? So those are the two things I saw there, which I thought were ridiculous, but is that what we're dealing with here?
Actually, only one. The subject of this appeal is only the ADA complaint. Oh, sorry. The subject of this appeal is the ADA complaint about the dyslexia, not the Title VI. So it's only the ADA. Mr. Wall did make a freedom of information request, several freedom of information requests. The board does have the ability to grant an extension, but I will say he is not necessarily entitled to have all that information in order to, you know, appeal the decision. If he thinks it'll be helpful and you think it might be helpful, you could grant an extension of this appeal. I don't know that it's going to be helpful, but that's your discretion.
We could vote right now to accept or deny this appeal today.
Yes, I mean, if you want to proceed with the appeal today, you would have 15 days to issue your decision. So you might want to go into executive session to discuss it and then come back with that decision at the next meeting and vote on it.
Yeah.
Whatever you prefer, or you could grant the extension if you feel that it's necessary to have these FOI documents.
So is the extension because we need the information in order to grant the appeal?
No, I understand is Mr. Wall thinks he needs to have these documents, the FOI request satisfied.
So that he could appeal.
He could appeal effectively. I can tell you, the only documents which are relevant to the appeal are the documents which Ms. Nelson examined and which were presented to her at the time of her decision. So I don't know that there'll be other documents which will be relevant, but I I think I'm relaying the request properly.
Right, and just to make sure I got it right, so he was requesting all the emails we've sent with the words, certain words in it, correct?
Yes.
Like pride, Norway, D-Day. If I'm missing anything else, and he wanted several emails on this. So, which is another reason why I would love to publicly start to state who are requesting, what they're requesting, and why, just for transparency purposes, since they like to seek that. I think it's a good thing that everybody knows where these are coming from. I don't see any any need to 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 grant that at all. But certainly, we will have a go into executive session and issue, you know, from my perspective in in two weeks. I don't know what my colleagues think about it. So I would follow your advice on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, but sure.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like then you're, if I'm correct, you're denying Mr. Wall's request for an extension of this hearing.
I haven't said that yet. I would say I don't know what I don't know. And so I'm I am open to granting an extension.
I would vote no, but just because of the way that's been handled and the accusations by this man for for a couple, several years that I've been in office that I've witnessed, and I'm not the only one. And I take, I agree with you that I don't think it's going to change anything for us, so I don't think it's necessary. But I'm okay, you know, whatever my opponents, my colleagues, my colleagues.
Janet, if you want to make that motion, and and it could be a board vote on whether to extend based on Mr. Wall's request, you could proceed that way.
Is is that okay with you? That I'll I'll make the I'll make the motion to extend the deadline? How do you want me to word that?
Well, you can make a motion. I will say, I'm not sure when this request is going to be satisfied. So I, the town did say they're going to, like with all requests, we try to act on them right away, but we have many freedom of information requests. So if you want it, we had said we'd try to get the documents within 30 days. If you'd like to make a motion to extend this hearing, put it out for 30 days and come back and see if he has the documents, that would be the proper motion.
We're extending the appeal, his.
Because the decision's already been rendered. Yes, it's it's the appeal and the hearing on the appeal.
So Janet Stone McWigan makes a motion to extend the appeal for 30 days.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a no.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I'm abstaining.
Then that doesn't pass.
That fails.
Yeah, so in that case, since the board will be hearing this today, I. Mr. Wall, do you have anything else you'd like to say since the matter is going to be heard today? Okay, so in that case, I suggest you close the hearing and issue, go into executive session, issue an opinion to be voted on at the next board meeting.
Ms. Waller, I just on process for that executive session, does it have to happen at this meeting now? We have a special meeting, but it's not noticed on there that we would be discussing this.
It it does not have to be discussed today. No.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to have to schedule a special one then for this.
Or tack it on to the next executive session we, oh, no, that's.
Yeah, then it would be, it would be a month from now, so because we don't have anyone scheduled, I don't believe.
Oh, we have, yeah, today, but we already posted the agenda for it, so it'd have to get tacked on to the one we have in two weeks.
Right, so we probably wouldn't have a decision then until one month from today.
So then I suggest, since it does have to be within 15 days, that there be a special meeting, yes.
So, okay, maybe we can do that fairly quickly because we're all, the next 30 days are going to be pretty tough for a lot of reasons, so, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
And maybe in the community connections, I know we fly the flag every day. Just remind people, June 14 is Flag Day.
That has already been written for tomorrow's newsletter.
Thank you.
As it always is. Anyway, is there any any appointments or nominations?
Not today, or not at this meeting, anyway.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Ken. Thanks, Barbara.